Okay, at six o'clock, is everybody ready?
Yes, sir.
I have to call the Board of Trustees meeting to order on Tuesday, July 18th, at 6:00 PM. In order for everyone to hear all of our enlightened discussions, would you please silence any noise makers that you may have? Would you please join me in signing the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance is to defy the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Baker?
Here.
Town?
Here.
Burdo?
Here.
Duffy?
Here.
Enquist?
Here.
Padanco?
Here.
Leo?
Here.
Approval of the agenda as published.
So moved?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes as published.
We just had a couple on page four. Line 25.
Yep.
We have no name under seconded. If you need it, I'll throw my name in there.
It said it was seconded by that. Okay.
And, give second.
I just have a question on the same page, starting on line 20. Did we find out whether there is a bathroom in the apartment?
We have a host of issues that we're working on and I will pull back after we've made a conclusion.
A conclusion?
Yes, ma'am.
So it's not one yet? Okay. Thank you.
In process.
Fair enough.
That's why I'm calling you, and I haven't heard back, so.
We're gonna call it in process.
Okay.
Oh, I did have one on page five, line one. That article about the CSM, was that ever received from?
ETA?
Yeah. Do we ever get a CSM on him, when he just said, "Don't worry about it," or something?
Sir, I do not know if one actually has been turned in as of this writing. We had the ladies out of the office last week, so the way this would work is actually come into Janelle, Janelle then mails them down to Audrey with the county mapping, which are forwarded.
Anything else?
Nope.
Paul, Baker?
Aye.
Close?
Is there a motion?
Wasn't there?
I'll make that motion, how about that? We went into questions.
Just worry about that.
As revised.
Okay. Comments and correspondence? Is anybody in the audience? We should make a comment.
Do you want me to come up there?
Sure, that'd be great, Joel.
Hi, I'm Joel Kitchens, I'm your state representative. We're kind of, in the Assembly, we are slower right now, kind of waiting for the budget to get done, so it's my opportunity to get around and kind of catch up in the different areas and see what, you know, what's going on in your areas, what your concerns are at all. I will say that Zeke has not been shy about giving me a call when there are things that do concern your village there, so we, you know, we stay in touch. So, right now, on the state level, we're, again, we're trying to get the budget done, we're overdue with it. You maybe have read that we've been in disagreement over how transportation would be funded. There is a commitment to putting more money into local transportation aids, so really the fight is over the mega projects and how we're gonna pay for those. And, you know, our interstate system was primarily built in the 50s, so it's all to the end of its life expectancy, so now we have to pay for that. Sorry. So, anyway, I just, if you guys have any questions, if there are things on your mind that you'd like, yes?
I've got one. Joel, I recall from a previous life that there's a federal funding match of one state dollar for every five federal highway dollars that comes in. Are we in jeopardy of losing any of that, based on the budget impact? Does it ring any bells with you?
No, I do not. I don't believe that we are, at all. I think that the money that we're gonna be getting from the federal government, unfortunately, is gonna be a little less than we had originally anticipated, so that's gonna negatively impact our budget a little bit. Anything else on your minds? I think the budget this time is a friendlier budget. I don't have, you know, two years ago when I would come to these meetings, everybody was mad at me about different things, so.
Friendlier in which way?
More generous. We didn't have to make, we didn't have to make as many cuts, I guess, in a lot of different areas. I think last time, the money was tighter, with the economy doing better and less spending on Medicaid, there's more money available this time, honestly. So, our, you know, our money that we're putting towards schools and everything else is nicer, I guess, that way, so not as many angry citizens, I guess. Yes?
So I'm just gonna put this on your radar, as I've discussed with colleagues, what's going on with economic development, in particular with how we have our tax structure set up in Wisconsin. Right now, the federal government proposes, I think, a 98 percent cut to brownfields grants, and ultimately, when we talk about redevelopment, that's where those funds come from, to be able to take those sites, clean them up, whether it's a peck of a side or whatever, and put it back on the tax rolls in some kind of a useful fashion. So if those grant monies at the federal level stall out, will we look at some mechanism here in Wisconsin to be able to foster redevelopment beyond TID as a mechanism? I don't expect you to have an answer, but somehow, that's gotta be a dialogue that's had.
Yeah, appreciate that, and I will keep that in mind, and see what happens with that.
I have one question, just for clarification, and maybe you are not aware or don't know it. We have a reciprocity agreement with the state of Minnesota concerning income tax, and they did something to their income tax that is gonna negatively affect us.
Illinois.
It's actually Illinois, yeah.
Illinois.
Yeah, the way that, yeah, we have agreements with both Illinois and with Minnesota on the income tax, and Illinois is raising their income tax, and they've made it permanent. So that will, the way it has worked is that Minnesota sends us, or Illinois, rather, sends us a check every year, and they still will, but it won't be as much, so it's gonna be about, they're estimating it may cost us about $50 million, so that'll be another negative towards the budget, so.
Ron?
I have one question.
Sure.
And Rob's actually living in rural town. I posed this question to the school, Gibraltar, and never got an answer from him, but not too long ago, there was a election for the school board. There happened to be a massive campaign through all the local medias with friends of Gibraltar-type groups paying for advertising and everything, which I totally get is okay. The night before the election, but I'm presuming, because I have two children there and the school has my phone number, I got a call from two separate people who said they were calling from Gibraltar School, begging me to vote for a particular person for the school board. The question I posed to the school board, and never got an answer, or to the school, and never got an answer on, was, isn't there some sort of state law that prevents a school from campaigning directly to the public on who should be elected to the school board that supervises them, or is that legal in Wisconsin for a school to do?
Yeah, and I was a, I'm a former school board president, and if they actually did call from the school, yeah, that would not be legal. I'm not sure.
I'm not trying to make a big deal out of it.
Right.
My main concern was that I never got an answer from the school.
Right.
You know, and this was specifically saying, "We're calling from Gibraltar School"
Yeah.
"to tell you, you really need to vote for so-and-so tomorrow."
Yeah, that's not appropriate. I think when we would have, you know, a referendum or whatever to, we would always make good with an off-site location to make those phone calls, 'cause, yeah, you're not supposed to do that, so.
What would you like to share with us that you find interesting or fascinating that's going on?
Well, you know, I've been involved with schools, as I said, I'm a former school board president, so I think there is a lot going on with education, and I'm supposed to be in charge of a task force to rewrite the school funding formula, but with the budget taking much longer, we were supposed to be doing public hearings and going around the state during the summer, but that's all been put on hold. So, I mean, that's one thing I'm excited about on a personal level, to get that done. You know, I was happy to see Eagle Tower get, that we are able to put money towards that. I think it still remains to be seen what's gonna be done to meet the Americans with Visibility Act standards, that's still gonna be difficult. But, the state is putting in $750,000, matching whatever they raise, so I was happy to see that. There probably are other things I should tell you about, but I, my mind goes blank, trying to think what are the things you guys might be interested in.
Have you ever been on a local board?
Not a local, other than school board, no. I've not been a local government board, no. Why? What would you like to share with me?
Well, there is so much, Mr. Kitchens, but I'll try to stick to this. I, I don't know, is it Act 10? You know, when the state comes in and determines what we can levy, that's basically your house telling my house that we don't know what we're doing, and that we're not doing it well. And it impacts how we can do whatever we want in our community with our constituents' approval, and I just think that's really horrible.
Well, I mean, I, to a large degree, I agree with you. I think that we have a representative government, you guys should be able to decide how much money should be spent. The counterargument, of course, would be, you can spend more, you just have to go to the citizens and get their approval. It's not all bad, I dealt with it, I dealt with it on the school board for, you know, I was on the school board for 15 years, so I dealt with it a lot longer than, you know, it was more recently imposed on governmental bodies like your own. So I dealt with it for a long time. I think, over time, citizens kind of get used to it, and they realize, yeah, they can understand why you might need more money, and they're more open to doing a referendum or whatever. Gibraltar School Board, obviously, school district, obviously, is, they've run more referendum than just about anybody. So, over time, the public comes to accept that, so it's not all bad. I mean, I tend to agree with you philosophically, though, that you are the representatives, and you guys should be able to make those decisions.
Correct.
But, I didn't get to decide that, and I complained about it an awful lot while I was on the school board. But, I think you will find that it's, you can live with it, I think, but it does require, it does require.
Well, we have to live with it.
Well, no, I know, but it's not as, won't be as bad as I think maybe you fear. I think it requires that you educate the public, and you're very fortunate up here that you have a, a public that really pays attention. I mean, I tell you, I have a higher percentage of people that vote in my district than anybody in the state. People in this area really vote, really pay attention, so that's to your benefit, because if you go to ask for more money, they're gonna be much more understanding of why you might need it.
And I'm sure they would be, but I don't think it's, I don't think we should have to go to referendum to do that.
Yeah, well.
It's as simple as that.
No.
So that's what I wanted to share.
No, that's fine, I don't disagree with you, so.
I've got a comment on the school state funding.
Uh-huh.
And I may be wrong about this, but it's been five years, we've had a referendum that's now just part of, I think, our regular process, but my understanding is, we get very little state funding due to the property values of maybe the water properties.
Right.
And while we may have that, when, education shouldn't be about who has this house or that house, it should be about educating children, and to say, "Well, maybe they don't need it as much, they shouldn't get any funding." My understanding is, we get, I don't know, $12,000 or something for library, and like zero for true education, and our local people come up with a million dollars or so to pay our teacher salaries. That seems wrong to me.
Yeah.
So as you look at that, it would be something that, you know, I mean, you've got a child that needs education.
Yeah.
It shouldn't matter if they're inner-city, or in an affluent area, there's, the state should be saying, "Hey, we've got a child that needs education, this child should get something."
Yeah. One of the things about school funding, and one of the things I'd like to accomplish in rewriting that formula, is that it's extremely complicated, and almost nobody understands it. One common misconception, though, is that the reason you guys go to referendum is because you don't get state money, and that's not true. You're, the level that they're allowed to spend on is based what they, on what they historically spent. The reason you don't get any money is because you have more property value per student than anybody in the state. It's millions of dollars per student, so you have the lowest property taxes in the state. Now granted, your property values are inflated because it's also, you know, a wealthier area and all of that, but the, it always irritated me, in Sturgeon Bay, being on the school board, that people in Gibraltar felt like, "We have to do a referendum because, because we don't get state aid," and that's a totally different thing. It's totally unrelated to that. The reason you do a referendum is just because you're declining enrollment, which most rural districts in the state are, the vast majority, and that's something that we definitely need to address, that's a problem. That if you, you know, if your enrollment goes down by a certain amount, that doesn't have a direct effect on how much you spend. You know, you guys, I forget exactly where you are, but say you spend, it's at least $16,000 per student, but if you lose a student, you don't lose $16,000 worth of expense. So that's, that's the problem, it's the declining enrollment, it's not because you don't get state aid. But, that being said, we are moving towards putting more money so that everybody gets some state aid, and you are already arguing to, in this budget, Gibraltar will get more money than they've ever gotten in the past, but that'll be part of the formula as we rewrite it, that's one of the priorities, that everybody should have a stake in it. I think, if I were a Gibraltar resident, or on the school board there, it would have irritated me that when this came along, all of a sudden, they're telling me how much I can spend, but they're not giving me any money. You know, it's a little easier to accept that if there's money going with it, so, you know, I get that. Anyway, talking about school stuff more than city and village stuff here, but.
I can swing it back the other way. Any anticipation of how we're gonna end up with transportation aids and transportation issues and funding?
Yeah, it, you know, it, things change so rapidly around there that, from day to day, but just today, we had a meeting, and right now, I think that, that we are gonna borrow less than what the governor originally wanted, certainly less than what the Senate wants. We will probably put some of those projects on hold in the Milwaukee area. There will be, I think there are gonna be some other changes within, as far as prevailing wage, and some of these other things that will keep the cost down on the highways, so that'll be all part of the package. I think there's been, today, things moved along a little bit, so I'm anticipating the budget. My guess right now would be, second week of August, we'll be done with it. But, that's kind of where it's looking. There's a lot, a lot of moving parts right now, and, but that's my best guess right now, might be different tomorrow.
I'm the owner of a gas station, and I just wonder why you would not raise the gas tax?
Um.
It hasn't been raised in many, many years.
Well, the big, honestly, the biggest reason we're in the mess that we are right now is because, under the previous administration, they quit indexing the gas tax. It used to go up with the price of gas.
Right.
And now it doesn't. If it had continued to go up, our gas tax would be six cents higher, and we'd have $900 million. So, that really is the biggest cause of the problem that we're in. And politicians don't like raising taxes, and the governor is adamant that if we put that in there, he's gonna veto it. So, that's why, really, in the Assembly.
Because that's really kind of silly to me. I mean, because everybody using our roads then pays for it. It's not on any homeowner, property owner, it's on everybody purchasing fuel in the state. We're thinking about implementing the premier resort tax, so that we can do some more infrastructure, and so that not just our residents are going to be footing that bill, but all the people that come to visit, that, you know, put wear and tear on our system and our roads, that they're helping, you know, in that share also. I mean, to me, the gas tax is just clear across the board, so everybody pays for it.
Yeah, well, you're kind of talking to the wrong guy, 'cause I think in the Assembly, we are open to that, but the Senate, the governor has said absolutely he'll veto anything, and the Senate is backing him, in fact, they want to borrow more money than he does. So, you know, we have to all agree, we, you know, we can't override the governor's veto, because the Senate certainly wouldn't do that. So, I mean, I agree, we need a sustainable source of funding, but that's why I wish, I would like us to go back to indexing, because to ask politicians to have to continually raise it, you're always gonna be behind, you're always gonna, it's never gonna happen until you're in a crisis situation. So, to me, that's not raising, that's not raising taxes when you index, it's just keeping up with inflation.
Correct.
So I don't disagree with you, but.
Okay.
So, anything else? One other thing I'll bring up briefly, that was, Peninsula Pulse about a movement to try to change with craft breweries and with the wineries, which is kind of a big deal around here. I don't know where that came from, somebody was trying to stick it into the budget, it's, I'm very, very confident that's not going to happen. In fact, I would like to see those laws scaled back and give our local wineries and breweries more freedom, because the way it is right now with that three-tier system, the debt is really stacked against anybody trying to start a winery. You can't, you rely on a distributor who may or may not even want to sell your wine, you can only have one location, your hours are limited, so you can't even do weddings and stuff. It's, it's, you know, it's a terrible system, but those are pretty powerful lobbies. So, anyway, the worst of it, though, where they were trying to actually close down these tasting rooms, that's, I really don't believe that's gonna happen.
Are you working with anybody, any of your counterparts, to try to rewrite those laws?
Yeah, we are.
Because I own a Class B license, and I would love to be a part-owner of a brewery, but it just, it's not possible.
Yeah.
It's illegal, and it's not like I'm a miller here.
Right.
And I, and there's a lot of people that have had these discussions, and there's a lot of businesses.
That's a proper miller country.
That have been lost to other neighboring states, because some chefs down in Milwaukee had to move a brewery to Chicago because they couldn't have, you know, a brewery.
Yeah.
It's really stifling business, and I feel like that's against what your administration's about.
Yeah, it is, and we are working on it, actually, there's a group of us that are working on that. In our area here, they provide tremendous benefit, the breweries and the wineries, you know, they bring in so much business, and those wine tours with the buses going around, I mean, a big chunk of those people come up here specifically for that, and then while they're here, of course, they stay in a hotel, they eat in the restaurants and all that, so they're very beneficial to us, and I would like to see that changed, because right now, to be honest, I think you'd be crazy to go into that business. It's just, with the debt stacked against you the way it is. There's some parts of it that are good, of the way that it works, I think it has, it's, in some ways, it's prevented the big breweries and all from just running everybody out of business to some extent, but, but I think, I think.
Don't you think those days are past, that they could do that?
I kind of think they are, personally. Yeah. But, again, those are extremely powerful lobbies, the distributors in particular, and also the tavern league. But, so it's a tough battle, but I think that this effort to actually even get rid of the tasting rooms is gonna have the, it's gonna backfire on them, because I think it's mobilized people to say, "Hey, we need to look at the whole thing. Not only do we want to kill that, we need to open it up more." So, I think it's gonna, it'll actually end up being a good thing that somebody tried to sneak that in there. Anything else?
Oh, you and your staff are incredibly professional, each time I call the office, I'm pleased, and I usually get a call back within 48 hours with someone who has an answer for my question, so thank you for doing that, it's.
Well, I do have really good staff, I, so, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'll pass it on.
Thank you for coming in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Correspondents? Anybody wish to add anything? Moving right along. Review of the draft of the concession agreement will segue the door tours, consider motion for action if appropriate.
I'll give a very briefly down-to-earth discussion once we get to something else.
That's fine. I guess I just want to explain why it's at the board level. Our Parks meeting isn't until after this board meeting, and it would take them another month, otherwise, to get this approved, so we suggest that we take the issue up here at the board. Parks had looked at it, Parks had recommended some changes to an agreement, and that's what.
Yes, sir. So, just so everybody understands where this came from, and why this is gonna get handled the other way that it's gonna get handled this evening. Janelle Supans is responsible for interfacing with Nick in the back, back there. Normally, this would be an item that I would take, however, just due to a conflict of interest, I work part-time for Nick, I took myself out of it, and Janelle handled all the information. Janelle's not here tonight, so Janelle asked Heidi to step in and handle that as well, so Heidi's gonna do the talking.
So, beginning on page 17 of your board packet, if you had a chance to review the report that Janelle put together, very briefly, what it states is that Segway the Door has been utilizing the parking lot over here at the sports complex for a number of years to conduct tours. They bring their patrons over, have them park there, and then go on their tour, but there has been no formal agreement as to renting that facility or using that facility, and the idea was that other commercial vendors in the area are required to contract with the village, so they wanted to put something more formal in place. And then the letter and the proposed agreement is included there as well. So, I don't know if you have any questions that you need to ask, or if you just want to take a look at the agreement there.
I do know the concession agreement was based on the template we used with Bay Shore Outdoors, that's where most of the language comes from.
I have a couple of questions on page 20, under section one. Just clarification, on the condition that when public park space is utilized, the segways may only travel on the mode, or on the route depicted, et cetera, what does that mean, when public park space is utilized?
When they're in the park.
When they're in the park.
Right. So they're in a public park, they have to, they have to use this route.
Okay.
I was curious, procedurally, so last year, when we looked at potential vendors for Marina, we were required to do an RFP. We're gonna have a commercial slip come up next year. This isn't, I don't think, been through an RFP. If we have a commercial slip at the Marina come up next year, therefore, we would not need to do an RFP in public hearings and bigger process, or is for some reason this different?
A couple of years ago, Segway approached the village to put something in place, we agreed to put something in place, we never formalized anything, and we never documented the route, although we talked about a route at the time on Parks, and they agreed to follow that route. They had been using the Mill Road area, well, where the new, where the new parking lot is, and then subsequent to that, had to move out of there, and we suggested that it was time to get something formalized and put it in writing, and that's where the discussion came from.
Okay, so my question again is, next year, when a commercial slip comes up, we can just bring this to Marina and say, "This is okay, and we're good?"
Okay, I'm not saying that, Patrick.
Okay, then, my question would be, is why did this not go through the same scrutiny that a new commercial vendor?
It did go through the same scrutiny, initially.
Has there been an RFP for Segway Tours?
I don't want to.
Do we know if there's a potential?
This dropped in before, before I was working for the village, so.
This started, the same time that Bay Shore Outfitters started, and then we had all the construction of the beach and everything else. Okay. And just kind of, we were waiting till the beach got completed before we finalized the agreement with them. This happened at the same time, and the construction was taking place in the park and on the downtown, and we kind of held them back as to what they were able to do or not do.
So, different, I guess, different viewpoints on looking at it. The way this actually came about was there had been this sort of tentative agreement that Dave's referring to, Janelle and I were standing by our desk one day, and Janelle said, "Hey, there goes the Segway tour," and I went, "Okay." She said, "Well, we had this agreement, this file, way back when, and we need to do something about it." I went, "Okay," and I do it, no idea there was a file there.
And that's when it came back to Parks. Parks said, "Okay, then you need to formalize it, put it in place," because it has been a number of years since we agreed to do it. We never formalized anything, because we weren't sure what was gonna happen with the construction downtown, the beach, everything else, because they were using those areas, very similar to what happened with Bay Shore Outfitters.
Okay, I guess I see a double standard. Parks wants something to do something, they just do it. Marina wants to do something, and there's an RFP, and public hearings, and a bunch of dog and pony show. My question is, what's different? Why is this different from what Marina had to go through, and what will happen? I want it to happen now. We have a commercial vendor who has a slip that doesn't want a slip next year. We should not wait until next year to advertise, we should be advertising now, we should have our ducks in a row. If we have to do an RFP, I want to know about that now. To me, here's a commercial vendor that's never had an RFP, if we're a public entity and we're supposed to open it up fair, I don't, I have no idea if there's another Segway tour. I've got nothing against the current Segway tour, I got none of that, but my only point is, if we, if Marina says we want to open this up, I don't want to hear that we've But my only point is if Marina says we want to open this up, I don't want to hear that we've got to do these four things when this is just, yep, do it. It's okay. You know, it should be on the level playing field.
Just do it. This, again, after, this is five or six years ago. There was two Segway people at the time. We did ask for competing bids, if you will, but wouldn't call an RFP. And the other individual dropped out. And chose not to be involved in Sister Bay. So, we agreed to let them operate. Again, this is all one of the construction stuff. We're starting to go on to the sewer and water. We started. That was the first phase. And we weren't sure what was gonna happen. And it got lumped in the same thing that happened. It was at the same time, same exact timing as what happened with Bay Shore Outfitters. So, they've been operating, but we suddenly realized, well, wait a minute. They're operating. We need to formalize this. So, that's where we came from.
Okay. So, we have a commercial slip. If it's used as a commercial slip, we're just changing a vendor. We're gonna...
Wouldn't you advertise for the vendor?
Okay.
I mean, I'm asking.
Well, that's why I'm asking. Before we do something and I'm told you can't do it, you gotta do some other thing. I'm not seeing any advertising for this. I'm not seeing any RFP for this. I'm not seeing any public hearing for this, all of which Marina was told you must do last year. So, my question is gonna be, we're gonna go to a meeting. What do we need to do to replace commercial slip next year?
The major distinction between this is outright, this is a screw-up on the village's part. This wasn't one that... This should have been taken care of prior to me coming on board. Or at least handed off to me as a file to say, hey, you need to work on this.
Ignorance is no excuse. If we have a process, everybody should deal with the same process. Otherwise, somebody can say, we gave somebody...
As I recall, and I don't want to get into an argument about Marina. But as you recall, what happened at Marina was the five-year agreements were up.
Right.
And so, at the end of the five years, the agreement was, within the village and when we put that together with the commercial vendors, is it would go back out to RFP at the end of the five years. Okay? And that's what happened. Last year was the fifth year. And as I understood it, Marina just wanted to come back and renew several of them without going out for RFP. And that's where the RFP issue came out.
Okay.
As I recall.
Okay. So, if next year we just went through an RFP last year, we shouldn't have to do an RFP because now we're mid-contract and we're just switching out a vendor for the same use on a commercial slip?
Is there any part of this Segway thing that's exclusive? Like if another Segway company came in, wanted to do a different tour, we could give them a similar deal? Like, is this exclusive? I didn't see it in there, but I'm just making sure.
We'll call anything.
So, there's a distinction. I mean, a boat slip's a boat slip. You can't switch it out back and forth. We could let somebody else with a Segway tour company do something else. You know, it's more like face art. It's more like those, you know... I hear what you're saying and I'm not disagreeing with you. But it seems like a very much more temporary thing. The transactions aren't happening on the village property. The tour is. But it's kind of like, if I would start a tour of my house and walk through the park and charge at my house and guide it, like, you know, on the road, you probably want to charge me for it. But would you stop every other person that wanted to give a tour? I don't think we would. So, I think this is different. I hear where you're coming from, though.
So, you have a vendor that doesn't want to come back next year. You did an RFP last year. Do you have anybody who responded to RFP that couldn't fill the position?
I think we should advertise to determine what's available. The one vendor that was in and out, if you will, I think is now somewhere else. Whether or not he... They may want to come back. I don't know. It's just a ma... It's more from the revenue standpoint. If right now that slip is, I'm just using a round number, ten thousand dollars of revenue, we need to fill that. And my idea is, don't wait until next April to fill it. Get on it now that we know it's gonna be filled next year.
Right. I would agree. You went through the RFP process last year. You've now lost somebody.
Right.
Advertise for replacement. I don't see a problem with that.
We probably also handle that under the contracting standards we have in place, which is the section that talks about fifty-one percent change in ownership. So, even though it doesn't imply ownership over the slip, we could look at it at a committee level and go, okay, well, effectively, we have a change in ownership of whatever the operation is. And then go out for RFP potential in the next five or six years.
And again, not that I'm trying to be confrontational. I'm just trying to understand what we're gonna need to do. I don't want to start something and then you have me go, wait a minute, you gotta do this again. And we just did it and we're not doing it here.
Right. No, I would just see you advertising to fill the four-year period, the four-year remaining period.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
I have a question about how you insure something like this. Liability and stuff like that. I mean, is it... Do they have to carry insurance and helmets and...
We do not. As a matter of fact, I don't... If you... Chad's gonna show you that part in there.
Oh, it is in there. Okay.
Liability insurance.
Under item number seven, it talks about being allowed to attach a sign. Do we have space on the Sports Complex sign for it?
We have three long spots right now.
Okay.
And then, under item number eight, is it standard in all of our other agreements that two or more occasions, if they violate the code of ordinances?
I believe this is what we did with Bay Shore Outdoors, so I'll give you a what for.
No. I'm just asking, a yes or a no?
Yes. Look at those warnings.
Those are the only questions I have.
More questions? Do you choose to...
I'll make a motion that we accept the Segway Door Tours concession agreement.
I'll second it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Carrie? Item number two, reconsideration of a parking and development plan and development agreement in Door Ventures LLC, i.e. D.C. Confectionery slash Domain FLP. Consider appropriate motion for action.
Pull the map up here just so we have a... We'll catch you. It's like a peek at it. So, I'm gonna take us down two different paths this evening in an attempt at to relate that in the written board report that's included in the packets. So, this started several months ago. Door Ventures initiated a project without a permit. And then we went through an after-the-fact permitting process to bring them into compliance. The major challenge being that a change in use drove a parking calculation, which they couldn't readily comply with on-site without doing some serious rearranging to the property. And so, they began to work through that process of going to plan commission, having dialogue with plan commission, where we discussed a plan to exchange real property that they're in possession of through CSM and grant to the village in order to qualify under our fee and lieu parking section of the village's zoning code. That was brought here to the board level. We had some discussion about it last month. And the board essentially said, you know what? This is really a private problem, not a public problem. And we think they need to fix their private problem. So, serendipity would have it one day that, for whatever reason, the summer's rolled around and I've started having a hankering for ice cream. And so, I found myself in a Burdo's Shell Station one day buying some Dove chocolate bars. And I went, wait a minute. This is retail. I'm buying an ice cream product that's pre-wrapped, that's manufactured by somebody else. There's no food service involved. That's what these guys maybe could do, which is sell a prepackaged, wrapped product out of a cooler in the back that effectively is a retail transaction as opposed to a food service transaction. If that's the case, it obviates their required parking concerns. They merely are changing out one retail use for another retail use. So, I picked up the telephone, called them and said, hey, this might not be what it is that you're looking for, but you're in a bit of a pickle. And maybe it's what'd facilitate a business being open in the downtown that wouldn't otherwise be open in the downtown. Is this something you might be interested in? And they said, yeah, actually, that's a pretty good idea. But we, at some point, like to at least consider what the option would be if we want to engage in full food service and do the scooping and topping and banana split thing if that's the direction that we want to go. But if this will get us open this season, then certainly we'd like to engage in retail sales. So, part one of this is me looking for confirmation from the board that selling prepackaged ice cream products without food service handling by the employees, i.e. a restaurant, would be deemed retail use for this particular property owner. We'd allow them to go in and operate under those circumstances. The second portion of this is a little more elaborate, which is we have a section in Arizona Code which describes a fee and lieu parking, which would be determined on a case-by-case basis by the village board. The village board sits fees. We've had some discussion about this in the past. Mr. Claude was pretty vocal at that time when we were going through our last revisit of the village's fee sheet and assigning that. So, we actually assigned it as a TBT item to be determined on a case-by-case basis. At that time, we were looking at an actual construction cost. This is before we did the parking lot over here behind Grassie's Grove, a child parking lot, of approximately three thousand dollars per parking space. So, that assumes a parking stall sort of up by Piglet Wiggly. It's a nice flat lot, not a lot of stormwater management problems. You pour down some asphalt and you go on with life. When we look at... Oh, go ahead.
Clarify, because in the past, you've talked...
Land acquisition or not?
Correct.
Okay. So, when we're talking about these costs, oftentimes, I'm referring to them with land acquisition costs included. So, the second piece of this would be, if we look at a real cost in our downtown of what does it take us to put in a parking place? We don't have any more available land that we haven't already turned into parking lot or parking spaces. And so, that means our real cost captured the last time we built a parking lot, luckily with some DOT assistance and DNR assistance, was roughly eleven thousand dollars per stall. So, for me to engage in a conversation with a property owner and say, hey, you need to come up with ninety-nine thousand dollars to put in the nine parking spaces on your property, that's a non-starter, right? I mean, that's the cost of acquiring a property and a structure in these cases. So, to assign a fee and lieu parking for what it actually cost us to acquire land and do a fee and lieu parking is probably a non-starter for a business owner. On the flip side of that, to assign a fee much less than that, and now effectively what we're doing is subsidizing private development through the general tax rolls or whatever process we put in place, the premier resort tax or some other mechanism. So, one medium-term alternative for you all to consider is that this becomes some kind of a perpetual payment or an annual payment. And in effect, spread those costs out over a much longer time horizon. So, we're able to recoup many more of the dollars than what we would if we set a lower starting capitalization price for a parking stall to be installed versus the full price, actual price, to acquire land and do parking lot installation. So, somehow, there needs to be a dialogue about what is it worth to have a parking space and how do you want to set that fee?
Zeke and I had a long conversation about this today. And I don't... Even though in the zoning code or the ordinances or whatever, it is a case-by-case basis. They are not considering doing this this year. They're looking at just the retail. So, I would feel much more comfortable if the parking committee talks about this. I do think his idea is a valid one, where you assign a dollar amount per stall for how many stalls you're short, and it is an annual payment. What that dollar amount is, you know, the parking committee can talk about it, make a recommendation. If they also think this would be a good way to alleviate some of our business owners from the parking problems that we have. And then, if it's... If we deem it reasonable enough, businesses just work that in, you know, to their mortgage, to their rent, to all their other annual expenses, and it's not a huge hit. And in the long run, hopefully, you know, it shakes out good for everybody. But I don't feel comfortable determining...
Oh, I don't feel comfortable determining that tonight.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't either. Parking and have...
I think we have talked about that, but when we brought it up, it was shot down by a couple of people pretty animatedly. Not myself. I think Egg Harbor does that. I don't know what it is. I may be wrong, but I'm pretty sure Egg Harbor does that.
Can you check into that, Zeke?
Would you use that... You definitely need to talk about it.
Yeah. We do definitely need to actually get together and meet and talk.
Our meeting's next week.
Okay, good.
But in the meantime, so that's... That part of the plan is longer term.
But I think, but I think that at a board level, and we can talk about this at parking, but we would have to decide like, okay, whatever that fee is, we have to be able to take that money and use it to alleviate parking, whether it means widening streets, putting in parking stalls when we renew surface... I mean, we really have to not just charge it and let it go disappear.
Right. Absolutely.
We have to do something with it that's gonna help parking, whether it be funding the trolley, whatever. We have to be diligent about that. Otherwise, what's the point?
Correct.
I'd like to just echo a point as you all deliberate on where this is gonna go. So, ultimately, I'm the messenger, whatever message it is that you choose to convey. And so, our process in this particular case was, plan commission has authority to run through these things and set values. And then that recommendation went forwarded over to the village board. At least in this particular case, rounding to a quandary, which is, plan commission typically doesn't get involved in village's finances. And so, we had a conversation where plan commission had weighed in on an issue related to finances, made a recommendation on it, and then sent it up to the village board. There's debates time and memorial about committee the whole or recommendations. So, if the parking committee takes a look at this and makes a recommendation up, certainly, the board has the ability to change it around. Mind you, the entire time this is going on, I'm having communications with these folks about what's going on and what they should expect. So, just be cognizant that whatever deliberations you're having has a real-world impact on these business owners and how it is...
Well, it's not just this business owner, though, Zeke. It's every business owner.
Even Al Goke's, right?
Right.
I mean, how's it gonna get a tenant with that?
It's the boathouse. It's CHOP. It's existing businesses. We don't know where it's all gonna shake out yet, unfortunately. But this could be one piece of the puzzle.
So, we take Plan B and defer that to the parking committee. And Plan A, move ahead and let them operate under existing retail occupancy permit for the balance of the shift.
Sure.
For sure.
Yep.
Perfect.
Time's running out. Motion second.
So, just to clarify, as I understand, so the idea is they're gonna sell prepackaged stuff. You won't be able to go in there and get a sundae or a sandwich or something that they make.
Correct.
They understand that.
Yes.
Anything like that would require a restaurant license?
State health inspection. In this case, they won't have to go through state health inspection because they're really a retail establishment. So, I have to go through all the food prep, serve safe, and that.
And if they had a bathroom, that would help out, too.
Do they not have a bathroom in there?
Yeah, they've got a bathroom.
I was gonna say, employees need to wash hands.
Well, I'm just saying.
I don't care if they're dealing with packages or not. Employees need to wash hands.
Okay. Would somebody care to make a motion?
I'll make that motion. A second.
Do you have to make the motion?
Pardon?
Do you have to verbalize what the motion is because...
Because Janelle's not here to write for me? That we allow them to move forward in a retail setting...
To issue a zoning permit to allow them to sell prepackaged food items?
That'll work.
Sure.
I didn't know how to word it, but I just knew I was enough.
Issue a zoning permit for retail operation.
Retail operation, that's a good word.
All over at Dove Bar at Burdo's.
It's a place of inspiration.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? Carrie? Thank you. Item number three, review of proposed amendment of the Stony Ridge Development Agreement. Consider appropriate motion for action.
I will.
I was just gonna say, does Keith just ignore us? Does he not want to come see us face-to-face?
I don't have an answer for that, ma'am.
Okay.
So, this...
They know tip. Well, we answer that.
Yes, sir.
From my experience, typically, if it ends up having to be something that he has to go through plan commission for, he'll show up for plan commission with all the appropriate people.
Okay.
When it has to do with money and fees, the banker and his business manager meet with Zeke to work out the money details and then come talk to us.
Okay.
Unless it needs to go to finance.
Yeah. So, there's sort of a long history on this project and what's taken place. Ultimately, we have the situation with a developer who, whether it's a situation where they got into the project, discovered it was gonna be more than what it was, or whether he knew what it was upfront, I think is really moot for our discussion purposes at this point. Rainstorm has certainly started out there.
Oh, I have windows open. I don't have an umbrella. The umbrella's in the car.
It's just water.
Way to go, Scott.
But I am so sweet.
Put that in minutes.
I'm gonna melt.
Here's my hat.
You're gonna actually have said something on the shelf, Bob, or...
No.
I saw it coming and I was like, you know, it's gonna be bad. It's boring out there.
Yeah, but you can still see blue skies. It's not so bad.
Yeah, but that's on the other side of the shelf.
I'm not going out there.
Look at that.
Oh, man, I got a box of pizza.
I didn't know this was coming.
Yeah.
It's not that long.
No.
Oh, it's just a... Oh, you got way higher up?
No. The microwave's dropped. This is raining so... There's so much water in the air. It absorbs all the radio waves. It'll only last five minutes, but whenever you calculate those, you have like, you know, how many minutes a year is gonna be down? Those lengths are less than five, and I've had probably thirty minutes this year.
Nate's been tracking this the whole time he's been here. He knew exactly what I'm saying.
I only peeked at it once, Chad.
That's a good sign, though.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mostly rain.
When's the last time somebody said, wow, we... Good thing we need the rain.
Yeah. Ten to seven. Okay.
Trying to think of what...
Holy moly, two or three times a week is not my idea of fun.
Wow, it is blowing.
I got absolutely attacked by mosquitoes. I've never been able to swat three on my leg, pick my hand up. By the time I picked my hand up, put it back down and killed another three, I mean, just...
Where was that?
Oh, so gross.
They don't bite me.
Bet you said the internet is down?
Yeah, and give it a few minutes once the rain lets up.
All right.
You get a lot done easy.
I can get a lot done in meetings.
Nate's still got to beat the...
I turned off my Wi-Fi.
I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
Parking meetings, eh?
Hey, are you at home? Okay. Do me a favor and close any windows that is raining. Do me a favor and go out to my office and make sure there's nothing like getting my computers raining.
I thought it was raining.
Turn on the cell phone.
Probably feels good, doesn't it?
Close my third...
One of the swabs.
Okay. Everybody's back.
Sorry.
So, fortunately, I was gonna call the map up here and the internet's down, so we're starting to think screen. But at any rate, so we're all sort of familiar with the general area of the project, I don't have a way fifty-seven. And as the project got going, we went through two pieces of this. One is the village project, i.e.... One is the village project, i.e. the infrastructure involved out there, and the other is the apartment project or phasing of that that's taking place, which if you've been out there in the last couple of weeks, you'll see that that's starting to go vertical, and there's actually some construction taking place. We went through on the village project, the infrastructure project, installation of all of the water, all of the sanitary sewer, connection underneath Highway 57, blasting for all the lines and laterals, so all of that's in place. Hydrants, stormwater management structures that need to be there for the project. So ultimately, what we're left with is sort of this rough blasted road surface, which is where the roads will go, and then bare land that needs to be restored with topsoil and seeding and tree plantings. Subsequent to that completion, the rest of that project would be developed out. We're, we're going to guess somewhere in the neighborhood of $150,000, using around numbers, short in infrastructure payments, which our agreement with Keith specifies that he has to figure out how to accomplish. So back in May, we had a meeting with myself, Attorney Nesbit, Jared Schmidt, our engineer, Mr. Stan Wilson, who's Keith's money guy. I bet my house is flooded right now. And Keith, sorry, a lot of water falling. So at the conclusion of that meeting, some of the things we shared with Keith were Keith, the village has an expectation, the citizens have an expectation that you're going to complete this project. And Keith said, yep, I'm going to complete the project. And we said, okay, great, that's how this conversation went last time, we're going to put some meat in an amendment to the development agreement to ensure that you complete the project in a timely fashion. So if you flip back in your packets here to page 27, there are really two provisions that I want to call out that place some constraints on Keith. I'm going to talk about the easy one first, and that's points number two and three. Bank of Lux is a material partner in this project, said, look, that's great, we want to keep funding things, but ultimately, we need to maintain all the liquidity that we need to maintain on our particular lots that are now under active construction. And so if you guys want this project to move ahead, you want us to continue funding it, we need you to carve that piece out of any special assessments. Randy and I said, that actually sounds pretty reasonable, ultimately because we need to lean on you guys to reallocate funds inside your existing loan portfolio to complete the infrastructure. So we'll concede that point.
So in other words, Bank of Lux agreed to come up with the additional dollars for the infrastructure dollars that he's short.
Yes, sir. Okay. So what you'll see under there is a schedule that we came up with, with a transposition of numbers, that last one there that says 2012, obviously that year's gone by, that should be 2021, under point 12A, or sub three amendment to 12A. So what we're looking for is about $1.2 million a year in assessed value. Keith said, yep, I think I can meet that and get to where we need to go. Should Keith fail in producing $1.2 million in net new construction value, there's a penalty to that, and that is, we use a running total when doing numbers for our TID district, estimates for our TID district, that's 1250 per thousand. And so for every thousand dollars he's short, coming up with that 1.2-ish million dollars a year, he has to kick in $12.50 per thousand dollars in valuation. So ultimately, what we want to see is Keith to get to a point where he's consistently building out that project. It's cumulative, and so it's not like he, if he does 1.8 million in one year, that's 400,000 less than he has to do in the subsequent years. So we, we wanted to really incentivize him doing it upfront as opposed to spread out later on. The other portion, oh, sorry, one last piece of that, we extended the payments beyond the life of the TID. The TID will run on roughly 10 more years till 2027. We went up at 2035, and that was to really reflect the lack of TID increment in the first couple of years of this dynamic to ensure that Keith has paid in a fair and adequate share to the TID. So there's a couple extra years there of payments due. Going up to sub one, how do we handle things going forward? So the board set at its last meeting, you know, we want to set a deadline of August 31. And so we discussed that with Keith in the meeting, and Keith is taking steps to move forward that, at least from what we can tell. There needs to be some step after that August 31 date that says, okay, Keith, we're moving towards foreclosure. We're, we're heading in that direction, you already knew that. But given where we are with the project today, stuff moving along, that's six weeks out, and six weeks, he certainly could complete it, that probably could be done in three weeks if everything was in line and ready to go. I just doubt that's going to occur based on the relationship with the contractors and the phone calls that I feel with the contractors involved in the project. And that really ties back in to Bank of Lux is now the hangup on Keith, and that they have to complete another appraisal on the project site in order to validate the repurposing of funds inside the existing loan to Keith. And so they want to be able to take that onto their board if maybe, and say, look, everything is solid with this project, let's get a victory there into the head. So stuck some liquidated damages in here of $250 a day, that'll run for 90 days. Ultimately, to go through the construction season, at the end of construction season, either owes us money or we have a completed project. And if he owes us money, we're also moving towards foreclosure. Any questions, anything he goes, wants he changed over different?
I'd like that just a few minutes.
Okay, so. Tired of Mr. Garrett.
Glad to see the building complete, but yeah, got it to be done.
So what's in the current development agreement, what was the deadline?
May, May 30th, May 28th.
May 30th, so he's way past that already.
Yes, ma'am.
And he knows everything that's in this document, and he's going to be willing to sign it?
The only thing that, that was not part of the initial discussion with Keith is that very first section, the $250 per day, and that came about as a result of me looking at the project site and seeing what's going on and thinking, okay, what's, what's the in-between moving towards foreclosure? Ultimately, I think the village is much better off if Keith completes the project and Keith manages the project. If we take it on and do it, what Representative Kitchens was talking about earlier, with public bidding on the, the project is going to come into play, bidders are going to be wherever they are, it's really not fun to manage a piece of a project. Luckily with this one, we're down to roads and restoration, which are things that we can handle through intergovernmental agreement with the county to get county to come in and put the roads in, and then hire somebody like Hockers to go in and do the excavation work. Unfortunately, since Representative Kitchens is in the audience, the $25,000 bidding threshold for public projects is what's going to trigger us having to do that. So if we have anything.
But before we ever went down there, were there's other options that may avail themselves?
Yes, sir.
And we've had discussion about a closed session.
So if he doesn't sign this, then we deal with the original development agreement, and what penalties are in there, seeing he's already passed that date?
We foreclose.
We just go to foreclosure. So this gives him the opportunity.
And we can, we do have a closed session a little bit later concerning some of the legal issues.
Legal issues.
And we can talk a little bit more in detail.
If you want to hold this on until we get the options as well.
Just looking at what he's got done in the last two weeks, when I, when I went by Monday morning and I saw there was vehicles, and I called Zeke and right away, I said, oh my gosh, people on the site. They put up their framing, and then they've just, they have not done anything since then. I have got very little belief that they're going to get something done in this timeframe, so we should just position ourselves as the best we can and give until that April or August 31st deadline.
I'll, I'll tell you, part of the holdup on the restoration work has been on, on our end in ensuring we've met all of the obligations that we've made to all the parties. So Tasha, I, and Jared Schmidt have had quite a few conversations. We, we understand at this point that each contractor is being asked to do more work than what was present at the original $590,000 estimate. What we didn't want to have is a situation where the contractors are standing at the door going, whoa, whoa, wait a minute, I'm supposed to get paid by the village for whatever this work is. So we had to have some conversation with Keith about that, as well as with a couple of the contractors to say, look, we've, we've paid up to the point of retainage, and we have $34,000, $44,000.
Well, it's now 22.
Okay, yeah, because we did the JF payment.
Right.
All right, so $22,000 left in order to pay retainage to the other contractors, which we'll handle and over the contractors. Robert E. Lee has said, look, we'll go last in line of payments because we want the project to get done, and we want the village to remain whole, and ultimately, we'll go after Keith if that's what needs to happen.
So do you want to hold off until closed session for us to deal with this, or can?
No.
Okay.
I think we can.
Okay.
Go with this extension thing, but in closed session, we can.
Sure.
Bring in some additional information. That shouldn't affect this particular decision.
Okay. Then I will make a motion that we approve amendment number one to development agreement between the villages, Sister Bay and Stony Ridge Development LLC, as presented with the correction under 312A instead of 2012, 2021.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Amendment number four, review of the 2017 citizen survey.
So this item started in 2015 as a result of discussions at the board level, various projects that we had going on, and a desire to be more informed by the citizens. I will tell you that the big three that came out of the last stakeholder survey we did, the citizens told us, please do something about our taxes, please do something about our roads, and please do something about the big empty lot on the corner of Mill Road and Bayshore Drive. And so the board, I think in great wisdom, said, well, let's tackle the big empty lot on the corner of Mill Road and Bayshore Drive, because in doing so, that'll impact the TID and therefore be able to impact item number one and item number two. So we put revenue first, and we now have active development underway down there. We've done everything we can to be able to control tax rates and accomplish the projects that we've sought to accomplish. We've sold any number of parcels in order to finance those projects and manage debt smartly through refinancings and debt staging to be able to control bond payments to minimize tax rates. And as for the roads, we've resurfaced three roads in that time period, Scandia, Woodcrest, and now ZZ. We'll take credit for the county's work on ZZ. So we, we said we wanted to do this every two years, and there was some conversation last time about looking at the questions. There certainly can be survey bias whenever we have these questions. So for example, some of the questions in here like, has leaders that are trustworthy, offer services that are well managed, has employees that are well trained? And then later on, it asks some questions about the community as a whole. We may want to jog some of those around and reword some of them. This is a template I developed when I was working for the town of Exmoor, Virginia, used it there, then we used it here in 2015, and it should go out again in 2017 to touch base with the citizens and see where we are. I wrote the board report, just for consistency's sake, you should try to ask the same question or type of question so we can compare the 2015 results to the 2017 results, if you desire to have that out.
I looked at this, and my thought was, in order to get a good context of two years ago versus now, unless there's questions that don't apply, we should use the same questions.
Yes, sir.
And that, that way you'd see if there's any, if we, if you think these questions are in fact appropriate from two years ago, and most of them are, generically speaking, if you kept the same questions, minus any that are no longer relevant because we did something with them, I would think you'd get statistically a decent year-over-year analysis of any change in thinking on the particular issues.
What was our percentage of returns last, two years ago?
I don't recall, ma'am. So I think it's around between 5 and 7 percent. We'd look for a 3 percent return as be a good return rate. Seems like we had like 80-some on somebody's return to us.
My critique on this is that I, I think for each question, you should have no more than six.
Options.
Ah, right, pertaining to any one particular question.
And I was also thinking, the only addition I was going to suggest was maybe have a blank line, they can write in their own.
Oh, for each one, that's a great idea. Every place that economic development is mentioned, I think we should, that could be a wide range of things. I think we need to pinpoint exactly what we're talking about, or what we want them to comment on, because it's too, it's too big of a subject.
So you mean, ask them specifically on this project, on a particular project?
Or, you know, more downtown development. You know, that's a little more specific than general economic development. I think we should try to tweak that a little. And I wondered if question number four was just, not that it's not a great question, but just kind of a waste?
This is a feeling question, and it may be more pertinent to other communities that don't have a high tourist population or as high standard of living as we have. But it, this is really an emotional question for your citizens. I realize that.
Yeah, you know, I love the fluff.
Not popular with emotions.
Yeah. And I was wondering if we couldn't expand question five, you know, ask more about if we could come up with a couple of other things.
Got three blank lines.
Or three blank lines. If we can't come up with something, that's an option. Under six on page 32. I didn't quite understand affiliate organizations.
It's one that I've struggled with trying to title. So we have, it's, it's under our budget, support to other organizations, so SBA, Fire Department, Historical Society, Humane Society.
But unless we list that, that means nothing to me.
Give an example.
So.
Is that? Under. Jeez. Open your windows, please.
I'm looking at my.
What else do you think of?
Train going through. Thunderclap, I was not going to train sound, right?
That was last one.
Yeah.
We're in the fire station, they have an alarm, right?
Yeah, that bay's way too cold for a tornado to go, don't worry.
So I guess my first thought is we could strike that, or somehow retitle it to.
I think you strike it, because I.
Well, there's some, that's an interesting thing, though, when you consider if you do have limited resources, but maybe you can put an asterisk under Marina or something, list out what that, or somewhere in here.
You know, the two that we really have some discretionary funding over is SBA and the Historical Society. So for example, the, the fire station support, what we have there is pretty fixed, it is a service delivery out. Unless you want to ask that specifically, we can. The Fire Department ultimately spends the funds on equipment, that's what that is. It's not like a, a labor issue, we've got too many firemen, too little firemen, we pay them too much, it's.
And the SBA is a business organization, it's funded by the business, so.
There are a number of organizations in what we just mentioned that we donate to in sums of money all year long.
DCE, D City is one.
Humane Society.
Humane Society, right.
So unless you list them all.
Right.
Well, you could say, such as.
Such as.
For example, right.
Top three or four.
Right.
The ones what we would spend the most amount of money on.
Well, then another question would be is, you got Marina in there, but the village aren't, I don't think, the taxpayers don't pay anything for Marina.
They don't.
I think that should go away.
Yeah, take out.
You know, ultimately, what, what we're trying to accomplish there is, is when you're asking a taxpayer what goes on, I don't know if the general taxpayer fully understands how we fund anything there. When you read the results from 2015, I was actually surprised at some of these. So on this particular question, we get people that would check every box, meaning somehow find a way to cut the expenses, that's what that indicates to me. The taxpayers don't necessarily pay for utilities either, but, you know, when, when I look at raise taxes as an option for utilities, ultimately what that means is do away with the pilot to utilities, and as a consequence, that's eliminating the taxes on the utility and therefore reduces the fees going into the utility. The same could be said for, you know, Marina, right? If you're, if you're talking about raising taxes, ultimately what you're talking about If you're, if you're talking about raising taxes, ultimately what you're talking about is reducing a pilot payment there, and so it's a.
If you just read what the words say, it appears to me that we're saying that Marina gets tax money.
Right, that would be my, my concern is we get a lot of people that say, how come the Marina gets money and the Marina doesn't get money?
It has to come off.
Well, could it go under affiliate organizations?
Yeah, put it there.
You know, and under festivals and events, I mean, now that we don't have a marketing committee or person anymore or whatever, you know, should that be listed? Change to Sister Bay Advancement Association, festivals and events.
Well, we do put out a couple of.
I believe it is festivals and events. My thought for that is, it tells us that if we want more festivals and events, we need to fund SBA more. I don't particularly want to take on any new ones, but we also have ones that we have, so at the same time, they could be telling us.
What ones do we have?
Marina Fest.
That's Marina's money. Car show, again, not taxpayer money.
Yeah, but, but on some level, I mean.
So do you want to set that as separate?
Partially, unless you guys are really doing some great cost accounting. I mean, there's resources from the village.
Yeah.
That are being used for Marina Fest. We can't kid ourselves and say there aren't. I mean, anything that's going out of the village, there's resources being used.
There, I think of the New Year's Eve fireworks.
Right, that's another one.
Okay.
Or our support to the car show up at Country Walkout.
Okay.
So that, I'm sorry, that was a question that got a lot of response last year, that festival events, seemed like there was a lot of comments on that, so that might be one we'd want to just see what happens after two more years.
You know, could, under trash service, could we put trash slash recycling?
If you would like, Ms. Perdido.
I would like, that is the service, is it not?
I could change that to sanitation.
I like this worse.
Under seven, enhanced dog park.
We had quite a bit of clamoring around the dog park two years ago to talk about shelter and water and other things, and so it was included in here as an item.
So I'm asking, is that?
I think we could take that one out, but I can't leave a blank line in the bottom.
Sure.
And road maintenance and road repair, two totally different things in your mind?
Two totally different things.
Okay, and would we want to, you're talking about.
We could eliminate one and just call it road maintenance slash repair, because you're right, for most people, they don't necessarily associate that.
Well, if we're going to remove Marina, should we remove Marina docks?
Yep.
Because again, it would not be taxpayers that would pay for that.
So the unfortunate part about what, or the, the road that I think that we're headed down by doing that, is we're effectively saying, taxpayers, we don't want your input on any operation of the Marina. And while taxpayers might not pay for that, they are the folks that are ultimately responsible to the debt that's associated with those particular projects. And so if we do have a dock subside or collapse into the water, it's not going to be the Marina ratepayers to pay for any one year, because we'd probably have to like quintuple the rates to get somewhere with it. Ultimately, it's going to be the village taxpayers that have to pick up that tab and deal with the immediate problem.
Also, who paid for the Marina to be built in the first place?
Taxpayers.
And they're not like they're paying debt service on that.
Right now, Marina is. The Marina is carrying, carrying a hundred percent of this debt load.
But I mean, they actually pay for itself to exist independently, it's still.
But it's not doing capital replacement to the degree to which it needs to do capital replacement at the current moment, it's continuing to move in that direction. So it, it, this is one of the items that comes up for us when we deal with.
So I'm going to say Marina docks if you put Marina improvement projects. It, it's a broader category.
Or Marina asset replacement.
What does Marina improvements?
Too financial.
And would we?
Different language.
And would we want to add anything about downtown development here? I know what we've done with the Braun property. There's one current business there, you know, how does anybody feel about the, you know, the rest of the property or anything else?
We, so I get phone calls from time to time about uptown development, which is also why I'm lumping in economic development. I realize that depending on who you are in the village, you see it as downtown or uptown or whatever that is. What if we had one that's uptown development, another one that's downtown development?
Great.
So the one thing that I guess, you know, you look at these village assets, we don't mention anything about the sports complex. Is there a reason we would, were you want to? Well, that's same thing, I mean, you're talking about the dog park is pretty specific, we go to the sports complex slash dog park.
We were going to take the dog park out.
Oh, we're going to take the dog park out, okay.
I mean, for that matter, we get a vice rank on there, they just, this, this list came from two years ago and things that we were, things that we were talking about heavily at the time.
That doesn't negate Pat's point, though, of the sports complex, I mean, that's a.
You know, I'll tell you that reducing debt is not a project, that's a financial management thing, maybe it'd be prudent to eliminate, reduce debt and replace it with sports complex.
Or move reduce debt to six?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That's really what you think.
Well, and I get your point about the debt, the thing to me is, though, if you see people with what's the least important one, with a lot of ones and number five, and reduce debt is number five, clearly they're saying, don't do the projects, reduce the debt, you know? And to me, they, they impact one another. To say, oh yeah, we got a bunch of threes and some fives, but we don't have the reducing debt, you don't know how important those projects are versus reducing the debt. Would you rather do these projects or would you rather reduce the debt? Reduce the debt. If that gets fives and the rest of them gets one, twos, and threes, in my mind, you know, maybe you don't do any projects, you work on reducing the debt.
So the problem's going to be reducing debt's going to get a five, and all the projects are going to get fives.
Or conversely, like rebate, reducing debt, reducing debt gets a five, everything else gets a one, and so now we send a letter out to all of our property owners and say, hey, we're thinking about resurfacing your road this year. We're going to do it all by special assessment, would you like for us to resurface your road? And of course, the residents all say, no, no, don't send me that special assessment, and so the roads are.
Well, I think you have to balance things.
That's what they do.
So should we leave it under seven, then?
Yeah, makes sense.
Okay.
Well, either that or six, it should be somewhere in my mind.
I think you're right.
Get a, get a pulse of, do people, are, how concerned are people with the amount of debt the village has?
Compared to other projects, that's, that's.
Because that is the trade-off, it's do a project or spend those same taxes on debt, that's, that's it. I'm going back and looking at number one. Anything you want to adjust there?
Ensures quality neighborhoods.
We just had a conversation with Mr. Garrett. I'm guessing probably a little more on that one.
Just thought it was not necessary, but that's just my opinion. And so you like number four with all the touchy-feely?
I see nothing wrong with a couple of touchy-feelys in there.
A perfect community for me. Okay.
Oh, I think the neighborhood thing is, goes back to the quarry, too, and that was a big deal.
Yep.
You're right.
Under eight, we talk about property values, but we don't talk about taxes.
I sort of saw it as public debt level.
Yeah, and that's bad wording, I think.
So what kind of statement do you want to see there?
I'm just asking a question. You know, if we change public debt le- level to public.
I will tell you that no matter what community you're in in America, it doesn't matter how well managed or how poorly managed it is, and I say this because I've had the opportunity to manage the second poorest community in the town, in the state of Virginia, and now one of the wealthiest communities in the state of Wisconsin. And in both communities, even though the tax rate in Exmoor was a quarter of what it is here in Sister Bay, the citizens will tell you, lower the taxes. Doesn't matter where you are, lower the taxes and fix the roads are the top of that list.
I know. And is festival and events appropriate under number eight? Why would that be a challenge compared to, you know, we're really talking about serious other things?
If you think about two years ago, we had, with some splash going on.
No, I put that out of my.
And that was two years ago, and things have changed, and so we're removing certain items as a result of changes that have been made.
Good call.
I just don't know that it's, we have it other places, maybe we could strike that.
Is there anything you're going to replace it with?
Parking, traffic.
Yeah, that was on the other one.
Blank line.
A blank line.
I like the blank line idea a lot.
Because you can get several things that was on blank lines.
Yeah, put, or put a couple of blank lines at the bottom of each one, what?
Right.
It's going to be a lot more entertaining to go through that.
It is, we got a bunch of comments back last year.
Under nine, I'm, I'm concerned about, is Rob still in the audience or did he leave? No. He was confused by the premier resort sales tax, and I wonder.
This could be expanded, this could be shrunk, because I saw this is the first opportunity to touch our residents.
And I think it's great that we include it in here and, you know, start letting them know what we're thinking about. But I think the, what it's, the state actually calls it is confusing, and so I don't know if we should call it by name. I think if we try to make it more clear.
Real tax.
Can you say the premier is or area tax or additional Sister Bay sales attack, sales tax? I mean, is there a way to kind of?
We can actually talk about what it is.
I was going to suggest when I read this, that we say something like, the state will allow the village of Sister Bay to implement.
That should be in there.
I think we should have a separate letter with this, as an unbiased informational letter about what that question is, so they can read the information as unbiased as possible, so they, they can educate themselves before they answer that. Because most people aren't.
That's an interesting idea, and even give those towns that have.
And they're more likely to make a response.
Here, Eagle River collects a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year, you know? And then maybe say, you know, whatever the road projects are, you know, ZZ was just whatever it was.
But I wouldn't even go that far yet. I think that's our job to get that out there, but I think for right now, let the people maybe decide what the money would, I mean, granted, we're going to say it's for transportation, but I don't think we should include numbers. I don't think we should, because it's almost like that's us trying to sell it like we talked about before. I think we need to talk more about it as we go because we're all seemingly for it, but I think if we're just going to put it in a survey, we try to make, just explain to them what it is in a letter.
Just a, a letter that gives the once-over of what the premier tax.
Yes, and what it can be used for.
Does it have to be a letter or do we incorporate it right here on, with the last question?
Sure, if you can get that much information in on a, on a question.
No, both.
I mean, I just think that's way too much information to put in a question.
No, 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 not in the question, but underneath, then explaining what it is, instead of a whole separate piece of paper that then once, either it's the first piece of paper that they open and they don't understand, and then they get to the question, the survey. Or they get to the end of this, and then on the last page is this.
I, number six I didn't read because of those six lines, so I just skipped over. I think if we put it as in the question, it's going to glaze people over.
The day lilies are orange and I hate them, right? So at some point, we get down into the weeds of trying to produce one of these documents. You guys tasked me with finding a consultant that's done this before a number of times to work on the marketing piece of this, I have that meeting tomorrow at noon. I will tell you, it's Mr. Bob Cuffer, he's been through this four times before, he failed miserably on a couple of occasions, so he's learned from that experience. So I'll be more than glad to relay your comments and concerns to Bob if you have any particular direction after that point, we'll go in that direction.
Well, we did discuss educating the public about what this half percent of the tax is going to be, so I don't know if you want to tie it in with this or not, but.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, and I also think when, the current wording that says tourism-oriented businesses, that's also bad wording, because it pretty much is going to be every business. People may just think it might be lodging. It's not.
That's the state language.
I know it's the state language.
But I would also go, I'd carry that into, I don't know that right now we want to say to help fund road and parking infrastructure either. If you're going to give them the information, these are the types of things it can be used for.
Yeah.
Just say public infrastructure.
Well, those are also the fund in the state statute.
Exactly, but I mean, go ahead and specify what it can be used for.
Well, we have to not, we have to distinguish about tourism-related, because I'm going to sit here thinking, I live here, I go drink a beer while I'm not being a tourist. That's not tourism, for me, that's just everyday life.
Right.
So they're, without explaining that, like, oh, it's just for the tourists, fine, I'm all for it.
Sure, right.
For us as well.
Right, I think we have to say, whatever you currently are paying sales tax on, this will be on top of it.
So I wrote this knowing there'd be a lot of discussion about this one particular question as it, as it came up. I don't know how we need to parse it apart to get it to where it needs to go, but I know that it needed to be related to an overall marketing campaign for whatever it is.
Well, and we know that.
Right, we know that, and I guess, let's ask the, the other part of the question, should it be on this survey?
Yeah, maybe, maybe it's not ready for it yet.
Well, is there a way to maybe point them to a URL where you could have more information and have comments or whatever? I don't know, just thinking of less mailing, less.
When is this going to?
You're going to spend about eight hundred bucks to send this out on the mailer, give or take. Just for a while, anytime.
Well, Jackson Power wrote about it last month, right? So it's already been in the pulse, so some, if they bred the pulse, there's already a, a little taste of it. So it's not the worst thing then, you know, how many weeks later, and here's another little blurb about it. So it's butterfly. But I don't think we can call it what the state calls it because it will confuse people and.
Well, I think we have to call it what the state call, I think we have to call it.
Consistent in the message.
But then we just have to explain.
Have to define it.
We have to explain it more maybe now.
Yeah. Like Joe had a good point earlier, when he talked about our citizens being incredibly informed, if you intrigue them, they will go out and research it, and then we do get calls for questions about material, and then they go out and inform each other, which sometimes is fantastic, and sometimes we get a parking deck.
I feel personally, I feel it's important that we say, if you're going to convey this kind of information in this concise paragraph, that it needs to start with, the state has approved or authorized of those Sister Bay to do this, Sister Bay's considering it. Here's what it's called, and here's the types of things that it can be used for, and these are the types of businesses that will be collecting the tax. Who, what, when, where, and why. And it can stay short and concise, but.
Right.
Who did it? Well, the state authorized this through special legislation many, many years ago.
I had somebody approach me at the store who went online and did some research, and came into the store and said, what right does the village of Sister Bay have to implement a tax higher than authorized by the state's sales tax?
Different section of the statute, which is where that.
The state is authorized.
Gotcha.
I also think it's important where it says, rather than have those costs fall to property owners, rather than have those costs fall only, I think only is a very important word. Either to the property owners or to the taxpayers, either way. Otherwise, it looks great.
Thanks.
Okay, any other changes?
But I, but I am glad that, you know, before doing this, that you did let us, you know, review it and.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so I've got, add blanks to all the questions, limit to six, pull some things out. Marina, a couple of spots.
Change economic development.
We on question seven, change that to Marina improvements instead of Marina docks. Trash service becomes sanitation service. We've got uptown and downtown redevelopment on question seven, and then day language on question nine. The state has authorized the village to collect, answer the who, what, when, where, and why, and for the types of projects that can be used on or with those funds.
Did you include blank lines?
Yes, sir. No, big deal up here.
You can add my notes.
Appreciate it.
Okay, ready for next?
As sloppy as I can.
Discussion on village bylaws, confirmations, president's appointments that are announced tonight. Number six, reporting county activities and county supervisor data. The county board for this month doesn't meet till next week, so we're actually a week ahead of it. Remember, finance did meet yesterday, and they're in the process of, they've got their first presentation to them of the capital improvement project for the last five years, for the, I mean, budget year, so that was presented yesterday. At the administrative committee meeting today, which was today, we had some discussion with the Chinese J-1 students that are in the county. There are Chinese students as a result of our sister city operation that are working up at. There are Chinese students as a result of our sister city operation that are working up at the Wickman House, at Bay Shore Resort, cottages up in Ellison Bay, and at Alpine in Big Harbor. And so far, they really like it, they're having a great time. When I spoke to them, they had lunch with them, I asked them, what did they like most about Door County? They said friendly people, blue skies, and the water.
The sheer blue skies.
But they're all, you know, nineteen, twenty years old, they're sophomore, junior in university over there. But they were all very appreciative of being able to come over. And they're thankful that we got that program instituted in their university over there. And we're expecting probably twenty, twenty-five plus, maybe next year, group out of that group. And the business owners we've talked to so far have been happy with it too.
Great.
The other thing I mentioned, there was some discussion concerning the back forty mine issue that we discussed last night. So this week, the land conservation committee will meet and review it. The land committee will meet and review it. And one of the two will sponsor a resolution up to the board. And I don't know exactly what form that resolution will take at this point in time. But next, next, well, probably this Friday, I'll see the resolution for the first time. It'll be on the board agenda for action on Tuesday. And then we'll see what happens. And then we can take that and do what we wanna do. There's been a lot of background information, a lot of discussions with a lot of people and organizations via the county level to come up with this information. So we continue to find out things, good and bad.
So who, is anybody leaning in any direction? What can you share, I mean, what will the county board do with the resolution that you don't even know is in it yet?
Well, I don't know what the resolution is, so I, I will certainly not speak for what the county board may or may not do.
No, but I mean, will you sit on it?
A resolution?
Or do, will you do something with it next Tuesday?
Next two, I'm anticipating that at the end of this week, one of those two committees or jointly, they will come up with and sponsor and author a resolution up to the county board for inclusion in next Tuesday's meeting. And at that meeting, we will have a discussion on the resolution and take a vote on what that resolution is and any amendments there too.
So if I had an opinion, I have to go to the county Tuesday night?
No, Tuesday morning.
Tuesday morning. Okay. Tuesday, yeah.
Or send a letter.
You could send a letter.
I mean, some, some of the issues you have to, it's not in our state. That's part of, that's one, that's a huge issue. We don't control. We can be, people can be as upset as they want or as supportive as they want. It's Michigan's decision to make. Michigan has agreed to operate it, do their permitting process based on state of Wisconsin water quality laws or rules. Wisconsin does have a stricter water quality standards than what Michigan done for this type of project. They've agreed to use that, they've agreed to use Wisconsin standards. So Michigan has heard some of the Wisconsin issues. But it is still a Michigan, project on Michigan issue. And my last, today I was told again, Marinette County sponsored a resolution against it. Marinette City chose not to sponsor a resolution against it. They took it up, discussed it, chose not to do anything. So, and there are other counties around the state that are doing similar. But they are down to, they need four permits, they're down to their last permit. Everything is imminent one way or another. But I'll know Friday what the resolution will be and Tuesday we'll know what the county board has chosen to do. That's what I got for county board, any questions? Review of the financial statements, consideration of a motion to approve the monthly bills.
Do you deny a month of bills in the packet?
Yeah, just looking at it.
Our last board meeting was the last week of June and I left the eighth of July before the board packet went out. So I just decided to consolidate them all into the August report. So you'll get them all at the August meeting.
And the bills, perfect. It's like opening a mailbox without their name.
You do have the, the financial statements for the major funds in your board packet. They are the July statements, but they're essentially the end of June. What I was trying to capture was some of the revenues that came in right away in early July. So that you could see, have an accurate picture of what's going on.
Is there anything in particular you want to point out on any of the statements? Or do you wanna leave one up alone?
I will say that, you know, revenues in the general fund are above budget almost across the board, which is great news. That's certainly helpful to us. We are tracking very well on expenses and watching everything we're, you know, need to be watching and monitoring those pretty closely. So I think we're in really good shape this year.
I'm gonna ask a question of the board. So we continue to work on and monitor the trolley as a financial entity. Certainly revenues came in in excess of what we anticipated, but expenditures likewise are coming in in excess of what we anticipated. We did have some mechanical issues early in the season, which the leasing company reimbursed us for. So when you see that, you're gonna see an expense within a correlating revenue to offset that. Labor has been a challenge with this project. And I think is going to be, to continue to be a challenge as we manage a public transportation project going forward. The question that I have for the board is, do you want us to overrun by a little bit and continue the full service delivery for the time period that we specified? Or do you want us to cut that back short and manage it short?
You specify overrun a little bit?
Yeah, yeah.
Hundreds, thousands, tens of thousands.
Less than two thousand.
How many zeros?
Three. Less than two thousand is what I would anticipate we're gonna be at.
And so what, so what would you be cutting?
Oh, we, instead of running into August, all six weeks we planned to run, we would cut back.
What would you cut for the two thousand dollars? Where's the two thousand dollars coming in?
Yeah.
You wouldn't start till ten in the morning instead of nine?
No, in terms of service delivery, we would lock off the last weekend. It, it cost us about a thousand bucks a weekend to run that.
Oh, no, that's horrible. Okay, so we had, we had more revenue come in. And what was the additional expenses that we were not prepared for? The delivery of it, right?
The delivery than the sending back. So based on the mechanical condition of the trolley, we wanna put it on a truck and send it back instead of trying to drive it back. If we have a major mechanical failure, in particular going up over the Appalachian Mountains, we don't want that to be our baby. So we'd like to spend the funds to.
Okay, so we had a budget, revenue, expenses.
Yes, ma'am.
And what did we anticipate in the end that it was going to cost us?
The loss was like seventeen thousand.
Seventeen thousand, yeah.
A little more than that, seventeen, one thirty-five.
Okay, so now we're talking about nineteen thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that?
Yeah, the original budgeted expected loss was sixteen, two hundred something, okay? We are, you know, the revenues are in, now it's, it's the expenses. We need the expense to ship it back and the continued personnel expense to keep the trolley running.
So we've got fuel and labor, our expenses going forward. If we don't have any major, anything going on, we might be able to land this thing in a good spot. If we have something that goes on, we're gonna continue to run over it.
Okay, but land in a good spot means?
Land on the better side of that cost equation I was just talking about, you still would have an overage.
So if we have an overage of approximately sixteen thousand or seventeen thousand at this point in time, you're, what you just said. I understand.
Yeah, okay.
Overage?
Okay.
Expenses, expense overage. What you're saying is potentially to keep it at the same service level, it may go another two thousand.
Yes, sir.
So bring it up to nineteen thousand approximately.
Does that cover putting it on the truck and sending it back or there's more expenses to do that?
There would be more expenses to do that.
There's a return of a deposit of thirty-five hundred dollars, which right now shows up as an expense, which covers the bringing it here, if you don't think of it that way. There will be a thirty-five hundred dollar net out to get it back the other way. Originally, when we started this project, we had an agreement or understanding with Door County Trolley. Door County Trolley been redigged on that. And so we ended up going to another institution, we'll release the trolley and continue the project.
Okay, so if we're at seventeen now, we're talking to keep it through the middle of August, another two thousand dollars, that brings it up to nineteen. When we ship the trolley back, are we still at nineteen or are we at twenty-two, five?
Aren't you still at nineteen?
I think you're still at nineteen.
Right, because you're getting the thirty-five hundred dollar security deposit back and you're paying about thirty-five hundred bucks to ship it back.
Okay. Just needed that clarification.
Yeah.
Has there, have, have we been keeping track of how many people are riding it on a daily basis? Is there a clicker?
The drivers take a report of what's going on, yes, ma'am. So I will tell you, the single biggest service destination right now is Fred and Fuzzy's, which really surprises me. It's in the evenings, people get on, they ride out of Fred and Fuzzy's, they do their thing, and they come back into downtown. The outline hotels, I mean, if you talk about project analysis on this, what we thought would occur is that the hotels would engage in a lot of dialogue with their patrons and talk about, look, just leave your car here and do that. That, I think relied too much on the human component of the entire program. And so while we have seen a little bit of that, predominantly what we see is somebody get onto the downtown and ride to another downtown destination and get off. Or somebody ride from the downtown up to the pig and then end up having to take the full circuit around. If we were to look at program analysis at this date, I would tell you that we would want to reroute where it goes next year.
Well, and we knew this was a trial run.
It is.
And is Fred and Fuzzy's a sponsor?
Yes.
Yes.
That's good news.
How much rider occupancy is there, generally speaking?
Low. Low is the term I would generally use. I mean, there are some times that it rides empty. There's not anybody on it. There's also, like for fireworks, I think that's the only time that we've had it fully booked out, we had a capacity of forty. So those were people from the outlying areas that were basically parked further out trying to ride in and use that service.
I still agree with the comment that was made that I think a lot of people don't understand it's free.
Yes, sir, I would agree.
Can we put that signage on there?
We tried to reinforce it on our marketing, so it's actually on all the stop signs. But we, we watch people walk up and they sort of look at it and go, eh, don't know what this is.
People walk up to it, they come in the store and they say, is there something that tells us we're out of there? And they could just take it right out of the box and throw it, but they don't.
Right, they don't see the box either.
So there's a neon sign on the front that says special. Could we say free?
We have attempted to make that neon sign work for us and we cannot get that neon sign to work for us.
Can I put some input in here now at this point, since we're talking about the trolley, as far as the SBA, what their comments were?
Sure.
First of all, I rode it on Sunday after the baseball game. I forgot something, so I took it uptown to go back and I walked back. But the guy said he had a hundred and fifty that day during the day. So I rode it with a couple from Illinois and they were just having a ball. They just were riding it. They said, we just need something to do. So what the SBA was concerned about is that the hotels didn't have the brochures. The sponsors didn't have the brochures. None of us got brochures and some of the people.
Country House has them.
Some, some of the people that country walk were like, it started where? I mean, I don't, you know, that was their comments, that they didn't have the brochures. And then they wanted, wondered if the trolley couldn't be parked maybe uptown some of the off times, like a zooer. Since, you know, they're a major sponsor, instead of always having it downtown, park it uptown. And then they, some people have been seeing the trolley not make stops and they want to see it make a full stop. And I've seen both, I mean, I, I watch it all the time. But, and they also wanted to know if there were, if they could, they wanted to have about times, like about times that it would be at the pig. You know, and, and, you know, you could maybe figure it out because it's gotten pretty consistent now. So that was just their input.
You know, every amp hour on fifteen.
Right, yeah.
We rode it on Saturday and that's what we said, you need to have.
So we already have that, we didn't budget for it. Jerry's already got it worked out with Greg Dills to have a tracking app and be able to distribute that to the hotels in various points. We looked at inside of our budget, what, I think it was three hundred and forty bucks to do it. We just said, we don't have the money, we're not gonna do it. So we pulled back.
Really? We spent all this money, we don't spend three hundred and forty dollars, seek?
We tried our best all with the budget.
Well, if we do it next year, we should do that.
Sure.
And I would recommend, we rode it Saturday, one o'clock, and we were the fifth and sixth customers. So we started at nine and at one oh five, one group of four had rode from Pheasant Park to Fred and Fuzzy's. We got to Fred and Fuzzy's and that same four people got on. They went for lunch. And so one thirty, he had six total, you know.
On what day was that on?
Saturday.
So the premise is, again, we thought what'll happen is people will get on in the morning and go out. We've got much greater demand in the evenings for it than we do any other time during the day. So what we should look at in the future is instead of starting at nine AM, we probably should start at maybe eleven or noon. And then run till later in the evening. The challenge that we've run into, because we've had these conversations with the drivers, is the drivers, I think all of them are now retirees. And so none of them particularly want to run late in the evening. So it's not to say we couldn't accomplish that. It, supply and demand meets at a price point. I don't know what wage you have to pay somebody to want to do late night, but somebody I'm sure would do it.
Well, the other thing would be is maybe to come up with like an eleven by seventeen or eight nap by seventeen. Laminate it something that you could put in all these places that when they come and check in, when they come up to ask questions about whatever it is, and it says free trolley, you know, go here, you know, that promotion piece that, you know, if we're thinking, have the cars.
I think all this is great and I just think that this is a, a step in the right direction. And over time, we're gonna look at these conversations, it's just like anything, it's habit, it's new, what is it? I don't know. It's hard to tell every single person and I get from desk, people probably don't have the time to talk about the trolley. They have three other people that wanna check in.
Right, we have to make that brochure gets in their camp.
It's gonna build over time and I think it's, I mean, I mean, it's, it's great, it's out there. I, I know, I have personally been talked to by business owners in other communities that wanna pay to have that trolley. Make a stop to their community. It's, it's gonna be fine, you know, and all this feedback is great. There's a world of improvement, we can come with it, but I, you know, I can't look at it. I can't look at it and see any negatives, you know, because as people have it, and when it's there seven days a week. And maybe we learn, nine o'clock is early, there's parking downtown at nine o'clock.
Sure.
You know, eleven o'clock is the beach hour, that's when people are gonna ride to the beach, you know. And dinner doesn't get over until ten o'clock for a lot of people. So, you know.
No, I would agree, lessons learned. Ultimately, what we need to have is a debriefing app, we're able to collect all the data through the season, all the ridership information, put that in graphs, find out how people are riding, get comments from the drivers. Right now, they're all anecdotal, hey, how are you, what are you hearing? But ultimately, we need to formalize that and then bring that back for deliberation, what we're gonna do in the subsequent years.
Are we, where's this gonna fall under for, are we gonna have a separate committee for this trolley thing? Or is it parking or is it transport? Because is there any thought on that parks? Somebody gonna kinda take the lead with it?
I think you should go to parking.
I don't, parking's not there.
I think staff just needs to compile the information and I don't know that.
Figure out where it goes from there.
And figure out where it goes.
Don't we, I mean, we have to talk about like growth with it and there's a lot of other things, are that just something?
I mean, the natural, the natural spot is parks, parking and streets.
I would tell you that based on what's occurred this year, if I were to have tried to move this through a purely political process about where it was gonna go, what it was gonna do, how it would come out. We've had a number of interesting challenges in managing this project, just from the decision points are down to two people, which is Jerry and I trying to figure out what's gonna happen and sometimes a loop in from touch or heighty. Certainly, it's gotta report somewhere, here's what happened. But most, most of CTAs look at gross numbers and where do you put in a new stop or where do you take a stop away? And then it goes on from there. Yeah, parks is sort of a natural home for it.
I'm just talking more of the philosophy with it, the pricing, are we gonna charge for stops? How are the business model of it? Not, not the day-to-day operation of it. I mean, I think you guys are doing great, but I think if our goal is to have this seven days a week and then maybe someday have two, we gotta figure out, all right, how are we gonna pay for this? Because I think that's the direction, we gotta be, we didn't do it for three days, not thinking we were gonna get there. So that's either our goal or it's useless to do it three days. And that's where I'm wondering the philosophy of it, what direction we're gonna go with it.
I mean, do, are you, is there a spreadsheet compiling the numbers on a?
Not right now, it's just being collected on sheets.
A piece of paper.
I think we need to pull back on this particular conversation and have it where, when and where it needs to be done as an agenda item when we have information to talk about.
Yeah.
I'm talking about financials at the moment, so.
It's way more fun than financials.
Did what I hear is we want us to run it, when we said we'd run it in August or do we wanna pull back short on it? I think what I heard is you want us to run it.
I don't think we can cut that. We're willing to go two thousand over.
Yeah.
We'll find the two thousand, but I mean, that's within our policy, our budget policy. So we'll find the two thousand, move it from somewhere.
Anything else on the financial statements, anybody?
What is our finance director's opinion or do you not care? Do you not want us to find the two thousand dollars?
No, I think at this point, I think you have to run it out.
Okay.
I mean, that's.
We're counting pennies, this is. We're counting pennies. This is almost a, not an every-other-day conversation with Tasha and I about where, where do we? We've tried very hard to land this thing on budget to show that it's a successful program, and that's meant really good financial management on Tasha's part, general management from Jerry.
We knew that there was, you know, some concern from the board as to how this project was going to come in, and so, we've been watching it very closely and really having a lot of conversations about it, so.
Okay.
I'll also tell you, you've got some incredible people working for you doing that. So, the example is, uh, Friday, trolley gets going. Door piston decides to just fling open and stay open, and so, when you start to take it out of service, Jerry with a wrench and the one other guy that drives for us gets out there, disassembles the side of this trolley, gets this piston hooked back up right, door shuts, within thirty minutes, they're back in business and riding again. So, I don't know that we would've gotten that level of service without those folks on board, so we're tickled to have them.
Excellent.
Are there any other questions about the financials in general?
Mm-hmm.
If you're responding to that, okay.
And number eight, report by village administrator and village activities and projects.
Yes, sir. So, in the packet, a couple of items just to highlight. Harborview, this is a, a project that's, um, old-school size, what we're talking about. Um, blasting's taking place up there, water sanitary install facilities for those assets. Um, I know right now they're waiting on harbor construction to come up and do the digging. Jared, it looks like that's some weeks out yet for them to move ahead. I have had a couple of phone calls from people who are interested, um, in purchasing properties up there. And what they're particularly interested in is, um, one, will the utilities be put in and, and what obligations the village have to ensure that the utilities will be installed? And then, what special assessments are out there? This thing that we've been doing with these, um, additional minimum assessment value payments has certainly made its way through the community, and so, they wanna know what their liability is related to those, um, so I've been able to explain that. Stanley Ridgewell took action on tonight. Sister Bay Marketplace, the work is substantially completed out there on, on the village infrastructure project. Um, one item that's gonna be coming to parks on Thursday is handrails. Um, I don't know if anybody has any feedback in particular, if the president would permit it. We have gotten a large number of phone calls or emails from what I'll describe as grandma, who was having a hard time on those steps. And so, um, they were engineered to not need handrails, so they're ADA compliant based on the rise run of those steps. Um, but people still have a hard time navigating them. I had a wonderful lady reach out to me the other day, and she, I explained all of that to her, and she said, "Zeke, you know, when I was a much younger gal, um, I played tennis, I went rowing, I was very active. I'm now eighty, I think she said eighty-four years old, and I just can't move like I used to, and it would mean the world if you guys would somehow find it in your hearts to find the money to put these rails in, because if you can't, I'm gonna quit going downtown because I can't get out of the parking lot." And the hill was too steep for her to go to where the driveway is, and she said, "I'm just, I can't do that." So, the, her words actually touched me, at least in my thought process. Um, I certainly don't have any difficulty navigating them, but a number of our citizens do. So, um, further updates just on the, the properties, where they are. Dick Wegman, we've now released him from his agreement. He backed out, was not gonna continue ahead. Jacob Management became the secondary on that, so we moved ahead on that documentation. Chris has got his, um, plans underway with Henry Isaacson. Uh, JJ submitted his first set of plans on the plan commission. He just dropped by my office today and said, "Hey, by the way, I'm gonna change those. Here's the ones I wanna do now." So, it started out as a one-story building with a basement, and Henry was finally successful in talking to JJ about a basement not being a great idea on that project or that property regardless of anything Chop did. And so, now he's got a two-story project going, and so, from our standpoint, it should be, um, enhanced from a value perspective and use perspective, um, and be consistent with our original plans there. Pre-three, which is Cal Aiken, is looking at lots twelve and nine, and Henry Isaacson's done some work there, and then also have a, sort of a secondary party that we're familiar with, um, out of left field, that said, "Look, we're interested in doing something there." I'll hold the name back for the time being.
What is Jacques, Jacques Go thinking about doing?
Um, it's just gonna be rental space. He's looking for general tenants, um, for the property. Right now, we actually had a phone call about it today, where he said, "Look, um, how could I start marketing the property?" And my comment back in was, "After you've gone through plan commission, you got approval for the actual facade's gonna look like. Let's get a sign-up on the property before you start construction. Uh, let's contact information, link out to a website, and we'll start beating the drums, get a tenant in place."
Not going to be built as a, any restaurants?
I don't think so right now. Uh, that's not to say that one couldn't go in there, that it wouldn't, you know, all of them, it was only could've do, but that's not the conversation right now. Originally, it was. I think Jody, you know, Jody was gonna be the operator, and I think Jody's, um, busy at the moment, and so, maybe he doesn't want another one to bite off. I don't know if that's the case or not. I just kinda get that impression. Small quarry, we've taken action on that. Pre-three, again, Cal Aiken is, uh, working for his design proposal for four apartment buildings out there. Everything that I've heard is that's coming along well. Uh, and then Goki on Mill Road West, if you've gone past there, you've seen the siding is going up, um, exterior facade work is going up. Chad had to go back to the development agreement after your phone call.
Yeah.
And we specified some blackout days based on festivals and events, but not a specific area in the parking lot that he would be confined to. As practice, Mike Skel and I have gone over, I think twice now, and had a conversation with the contractors to say, "Look, we want you to stay confined to these spaces." And they, for the most part, have done that. I would've told them to go.
How many spaces were they on?
Um, I think we gave them six there, Chad. It's the spaces basically right up against them, then we told them to leave the motorcycle parking open. Um, but ultimately, they bring in their contractor vehicles as well, so while they may have those spaces for materials, I would hope that that'll dwindle down as they cease using all the big upward materials, dimensional materials, and then it's just contractor vehicles. So, we're cognizant of it, and Al's, I think, ready to rip his hair out with it, 'cause he's trying to drive the project, and it's not going as fast as he wants it to go. Um, so at the staff level, we continue to make tweaks to play to strengths and minimize areas of improvement. Um, you know, we have a number of new staff this year, uh, all the way around in utilities, marina, and parks. And, um, if you guys see something in the field, certainly, it can't be everywhere all the time, nor can our department heads, but please give me a ring. I got a comment from one of you walking back about the restrooms. That prompted a broader conversation about, you know, restroom cleanliness, and we certainly try to stand top of those things. But, um, again, if you see something, please let us know. Um, and in the trolley, we just had that conversation. Things are.
So, a couple of comments or questions. The handrails, I was thinking at the last meeting, you were reaching out to somebody to get some quotes to determine what are we looking at?
I did. Thirty-nine-hundred.
Thirty-nine-hundred, okay.
Yes, sir.
For all of them?
For one set. So, one set of steps at the closest to Chop. It doesn't matter, same dimensions on both of them.
Okay. But so, there's another set stairs by.
Four thousand dollars.
By the bowl. It wouldn't cover anything by the, the steps closest, the southern steps, okay? And that's the product installed or were installed?
No, it's installed and put in. Um, when they do those, they're all custom cut, custom welded, and then custom painted and custom installed. So, for example, the ones over at the beach, I think those were fourteen-hundred bucks for the, just the two little ones going down those six or seven steps right there at the beach. They're not cheap to put in. I was actually surprised they came back in foreground, but I mean, it's like eight or nine.
So, it's on parks agenda for?
Yes, sir.
So, is this one set?
Yes.
Is all that's needed, or you mean multiple sets?
I think, I think people would probably like two, but if we have one, uh, well, my fear is that we're gonna, we're gonna put in handrails, and then pre-three or the other party's gonna come in and say, "Hey, we're ready to develop. We're gonna tear these things out in twelve months", which is gonna be the case for some of the concrete work anyway. It's just the cost of doing business. You have to keep it accessible.
But then they have to replace it.
Yeah, that's part of the agreement.
So, when you say, "If you see something in the field," I've got a, and maybe this is parks-related, but in the last two weeks, I've watched two boats with propellers pull up and load and unload people from the swim dock while kids are swimming.
From the swim dock?
No, that's a, that's a Coast Guard issue.
And then we've got two jet skis, same thing, pull up. Those aren't as dangerous because there's no prop, but I mean, literally, these boats are.
Please, please pick up the telephone and call Mike Neal with DNR and get Mike involved.
Well, my comment was gonna be, we used to have little red buoys, but it was a rope that we had the swim area. Maybe we would need a bigger one now or something, but even just, you know, around that part is just to discourage.
Yeah, why don't we have that?
We have the buoys there.
No, but the, the little swim ones, they kind of created a, a barrier, and a boat could notice it easier and realize, "Okay, well, that's."
Right, stay out. I can't run my prop over this rope. It's gonna tangle up.
So.
We're gonna want to.
I guess, here's my comment back to that. If we put a stop sign up, you as a driver, licensed driver in the state, understand that you're supposed to stop at that stop sign. Do I need to come in and put the blinky red lights and the bump strips link up to it?
You do at intersections where there's problems, so there's a problem.
Um, in our case, we don't have any enforcement capability, so our, our enforcement capability is limited at, please don't do that.
Just put up the rope, Zeke.
We still put the stuff out there to act as barriers at a minimum.
I think it would be a good idea. If we still have them, it, it can't hurt to put them out. E- even if it was just around that swim pier, that you don't have boats trying to dock at the swim pier and somebody gets chopped up by a propeller.
That one is referred to.
I can refer to parks. The reason I have this blank look on my face is 'cause I remember Steve Mann saying something about, "We can't do that," but I don't remember why.
No, it wasn't that.
It wasn't that.
It was something else.
Were you there at that meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and.
It was not that.
To cover the new swim area, we have to get the new material, 'cause what we had wasn't covered.
And even if it's for the rest of this year, what we have, and it's just a little bit by the swim pier, that would be, I think, an improvement.
That is a horrible boater.
Yes.
Boating behavior.
And it was two, not one, but two. One was a longtime Sister Bay resident. I'm going, "Are you kidding me?"
Did you have a conversation?
No, I was on, on my boat, so I was always, but I'm, I'm watching, I'm, I'm going, "Is that who I think it is?" And yes, it is. I'm going, "Really?" You know.
Something I always really wondered about at Marina is there's millions of dollars of property there. There's absolutely no cameras in place. You could put a camera shooting out, it would catch that swim dock from that tower, and that would get it. And if people know they're on camera, they are more likely to behave.
That's a good point. But also.
Great idea.
All hosts of other.
There goes my skinny dipping hat now.
I was just thinking.
Stay way over on the other end now.
You know, maybe, maybe that should be on the parks' agenda.
Sure.
Or Marina, or whoever, I wear placement, you know, purchasing a camera for next season or whatever, and having that conversation.
He started talking about it.
Should ask the county, I guess. They just put a bunch of them over in place recently, and they're all IP, so just internet. Wherever you got Wi-Fi, you can hook it.
Yeah, that would be the way to do it. You don't want tapes. You don't.
No, no.
You do it to the cloud. It's uploading constantly. That way.
You keep it for forty-eight hours or something, and then it just deletes and the new ones go out.
And people can log in and look at it too and see what's going on.
Yeah, we'll miss some of the county, and then we'll get it as part of the budget process.
I would also say it'd be great for marketing, too.
Yeah, SBA could lob beam it out. I, actually, I've had requests at the pavilion, like, "Put it on the pavilion side and angle it, so you can catch some of the pavilion." I had an email from somebody down in Chicago, said, "Is there any way to catch the concert in the park tonight by live stream?" And I went, "No, but potentially could do that."
While we're talking about really important stuff at this, my daughter's crying at me when this swim platform's gonna be in. I mean, I.
Yeah.
Steve Mann has called Portupier. Portupier has said, "It's coming. It's not here yet."
The season's gonna be over.
I just had a conversation with them earlier in the week, and they said it's still not in, so we'll continue to go. It's supposed to be in the middle of July. We're not in the middle of July.
All right.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Okay, since we're talking about a lot of committee things, I think we need to move into committees.
Okay.
Can I say one thing about financials?
Sure.
However long the swim raft is overdue whenever it does arrive, I think that's how long we wait to pay Portupier.
Sure, tell Tasha I'm phoning that.
You can send it my direction. I have no problem. You don't think it is?
No.
It's probably the manufacturer.
Supplier.
It's suppliers. I mean, my, my husband had the same problem at work trying to get rafts in at his marina.
Okay.
It's just, it's at the supplier end.
Probably in November.
Yeah, in November, it'll show up.
Anything else? Financials? Oh, go ahead, Kathy.
Um, are we gonna discuss, um, matters to be placed in the future agenda?
Yes, we will get to that.
Okay.
I wanna move into committee reports.
Okay.
Then we'll do a closed session, then we'll do the.
Okay.
We'll take a break after committees before we.
Good idea.
Committee reports, signed on page sixty-two. First one, admin has not met. Admin, Cap, oversight has not met. County tech has not met. Coastal byways.
Has not met.
DC, CD.
Not at that meeting.
Well, they did post, um, the, the job this week.
Um, they did interviews. They've done three out of five interviews to replace Sam Parmos' position. They have two more coming up, and they're doing one for the decab.
Did you alphabetize the committees?
Yes, ma'am, I did.
Wow.
Thank you. Just noticed that.
Yes, ma'am.
It's the little things that make me happy in life.
It's not on that.
Utilities.
Oh.
I tried.
I think you lost the finance. The minutes don't necessarily correspond to the order of the committees either.
Well, they did when I did it, but then it got switched around.
Economic development has not met. Finance.
Has not met.
Fire.
Has not met.
Our district.
Has not met either.
Historical society.
Uh, met on July tenth. Uh, new treasurer, Kathy Mangen, was elected. Uh, they authorized a thousand-dollar preliminary, uh, thousand dollars for preliminary drawings on the new barn that they're talking about. Scheduling some upcoming events, Ice Cream Social, a quilt exhibit, Marina Fest and Fall Dinner, and, um, that was about it.
Questions? Holiday lighting has not met. Library.
Um, the library met. Um, you did get an attachment. Maybe I can find that faster. Right, so the library met. And, um, I'll have to find it, 'cause I have notes on it here. Oh, jeez. Here it is. There were some problems in the library. Um, there were some parties going on behind the library in the gardens, and there was huge broken bottles, like, they must've wouldn't, I mean, they couldn't have drank in all the liquor bottles that they smashed. So, they were talking about maybe putting up camera in the back there. Um, there was, so, um, there has been parking, um, problems in the library.
Are there motion sensor lights anywhere around the library there? Might discourage congregating at the light hours.
Actually, no, if you wanna walk back there, nothing.
On the other hand, keep them out of the parks, man.
So, um, the, uh, they are gonna, they have requested to put up a, you know, a sign that says, "Library patrons only." Um, they've, it's been full. The parking lot's been full, and they are doing some evening programs, so there's concern that there won't be parking. Um, discussion on whether or not they should put up a garbage can, uh, because, you know, people will bring their garbage to it, but, um, so that's still one discussion, because they're, they're finding a lot of garbage around in the gardens as well, pizza boxes. Um, we did ask that, um, a, a regular sign be put up to identify where the library is. And this was amazing. We talked about, people were asking, "What is that building now that you can see it behind the marketplace?" And people wanna know, "Is it a church, or what is it?" And I was sitting and I was getting some takeout food, um, at Grassie's, and there was two young girls sitting next to me, and they're like, "What is that building?" So, we were wondering if there was a way, if there could be a sign on that building that said, "Public library." So, a lot of signage discussions.
The one out front, I was looking at last week. It doesn't look like it's been maintained in quite some time. It's, uh, it's very sort of dingy and dirty and needs to be painted up, um, but that faces Mill Road instead of facing off the backside of the building. I think that's where you need the signage.
Yeah. That's it?
Yeah.
We're leaving Marina Fest.
Meeting coming up.
Meeting coming up next week. Parking.
We're meeting next week?
Tuesday.
Parks. Meeting Thursday. Personnel.
Soon as we get the needs of doodle, we will meet.
Just call me on the phone.
This is your doodle call?
Yes.
Plan permission.
Minutes are here. Um, I would like to make a few corrections.
What page is this, uh?
Sixty-seven.
I expect you're out of order with the. Looks like you're out of order with the.
On line six and has come to the conclusion that some revisions are warranted, I think that needs to be changed to a total rewrite. That's, that's what we're talking about, a total rewrite. And then I think also down on line twenty-seven or somewhere in there. We're not talking about just amendments being made, so I think wherever there's reference to that, we're gonna do a total rewrite. Just so maybe that could get fixed before the plan commission, so then we can approve them.
You got that over there, Heidi?
Mm-hmm.
Anything else, plan?
Tourism zone.
I sleep SBA.
Has an executive committee meeting coming up, we got the report from the last, we haven't met yet.
You said.
No meeting.
SBA, you have in front of you the SBA quarterly. Which I'm assuming they want us to review for a payment.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Do we know, I was kinda curious, and I think it's great, they've got the concerts and they're getting sponsorships, which is really good. I'm trying to remember now, you know, when we signed that thing, the idea of trying to grow the number of events. They've got movies and whatever else, just a lay of the land of, here's what we're doing, hopefully correlates to what that agreement is, how it's going.
Couple of things have happened, one is they were supposed to give us a presentation annually and they've had some turnover. So, Paige Left, Chris came in, Chris wasn't in a position to give us the presentation, we said, okay, let's do it at the end. So, now Chris has taken off, we've got a new one in hand and that person's gonna try to figure out which way is up. This is a problem throughout Door County and.
And Ron Keen left.
Oh, yeah, Ron left. We certainly could have a conversation with them and say, look, we, we wanna know what's going on, but how long has the new group been there, two weeks?
Well, that's fine, maybe it's a calendar, maybe it's, you know, I would, I would think last year when we, you know, the idea of, okay, you're gonna have an extra twenty thousand dollars for twenty seventeen and that's to be used for so many more events, okay. What are those events, you know?
We, we did, we submitted that.
They gave us a list, gave us a schedule.
Additional councils and additional meetings.
And that lines up with the agreement?
I've not gone back to verify.
Okay.
We can double check.
I was just curious, I'm not saying they are or they aren't.
The answer would be yes.
Yeah, they came back to parks, because parks has to sign on the usage for the very facilities that they were using and they go through the whole thing.
Okay.
And we sent off, as a matter of fact, we asked them to go back and change a few things and they came back.
So, they would be somewhere in the parks minutes? Okay.
From February?
Yeah, this was early spring.
Early spring. I have one question on this, on page two. Under the general expenses, depreciation, what do they have for depreciation?
A vehicle, we bought a vehicle.
Assets.
Equipment.
Whatever equipment they'll have will be depreciated.
The float, whatever that storage unit is full of.
Yeah, so it would just be equipment.
Oh, probably the, the coolers, the popcorn machine, the lemonade stand, it's probably all, the vehicle, I would imagine, is probably the big one.
Any other questions on it? That we would need a motion to accept their quarterly financials and authorize next payment.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, carry. Okay, we're now gonna move into closed session, we'll go ahead, do closed session, then we'll take a quick break before we actually do.
Utilities minutes? Because they weren't done.
Looks like they weren't done.
Those are, those are.
Oh, they're Aprils?
They're Aprils.
We tabled this last meeting because the link didn't work for most people, so now, and good job already, we've already getting that statement of, you know, you can go to all documents and get whatever you want anytime. Our committee members didn't do that.
We had a lot for the November meeting, I'll go.
Fifteen.
Okay, consider motion to convene executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen dot eight five one G. For a legal council for governmental body who has rendered all written advice concerning strategy would be adopted by the body with respect to litigation, in which it is or likely is becoming bound. Motion by Leo.
Second.
Roll call.
Baker.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Burdo.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Ennis.
Yes.
Rambo.
Yes.
And you.
All right, we're now in closed session, we're gonna take a five-minute recess.
Go check that.